Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February 17th, 2015 Wakegan City Council Meeting. Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Ezekiel Robbins, please.
Our Father and our God, we thank you again for another day, for another opportunity to be of service unto thee and unto thy people. We pray now that you would guide our minds and keep us as we go along our way, keep us in a mind that stays on thee. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As many of you may know or understand, our water meters are old and antiquated, and we're having some misreadings in our system, so... Oh, roll call, sorry. Roll call.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Beedley.
Here.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Vivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Okay, as I was saying, as many of you may know or may not know, our water meter system is old and antiquated. We've been having numerous problems with that system. So George Torres and Tom Haggerty have been taking it on themselves to find a company or companies to work in our systems, and we intend to replace our water meters. And we used to take the water meters and we'd have a meter reader person walk to your house and read your meter. Under the new system, we can drive by in a car, we can do the whole day, we can do the whole city in less than eight hours, is it? Less than eight hours.
Eight to ten.
So I'd like to present to you three of the gentlemen who are going to be doing this program for us. Tom Ziegler of Itron, Scott Smith of United Systems, and John Cunningham of...
Cummings.
Yeah, Cummings, I'm sorry, of PMI. So gentlemen, George, you want to...
Mayor and members of the council, also Brian Anderson was part of our project team.
Sorry, Brian.
And working on this. I'll introduce the gentlemen like you did. We'll start the PowerPoint presentation. Keeping one thing in mind, we try to offer better customer service to our residents, and we feel this is a win-win for everyone. But we'll get started with the presentation.
Thank you for having us this evening, Mayor and Council, and George, Tom, and Brian. And the proposal is for automated meter reading system. And I'm Scott Smith with United Systems, the distributor for Itron, and John Cummings is a meter installer. If you would, John, next slide. So the reason for this system, the two main reasons are to save money and provide better customer service. You're going to be saving money by using the established pricing from 2013 for our Lake County project, using the shared services initiative. And that pricing's already two years old, but we are going to extend that for this program. Lake County also went through an extensive selection process, started with seven companies, narrowed it down to two, and then moved forward with this same team. So you save money by not having to go through that process. By using an automated system, you will reduce your workman's comp greatly. And also by using new meters, the meters that are in place may be inaccurate due to age, you will increase revenues. Customer service will increase. You have the option to move from quarterly to monthly billing with this system, which reduces customer bills, makes the cash flow better. The ability to read the meters in two days with one person. The system offers a customer web portal, which allows customers to log in and view their daily or hourly usage for their water usage. The customer service reps also have access to that same usage. And there is a possibility for an amnesty program should the inside and outside meter readings not match currently. We would recommend that, but that's up to you all. So area systems that have deployed this same system, system in the area are Lake County Public Works, we'll be wrapping that up in the next month, there may be too much, Arlington Heights, Crystal Lake, Wheaton, Batavia, Geneva, Decatur, Rockford, Springfield, Carroll Stream, Madison, and Milwaukee, Wisconsin, both use the Itron system or all use Itron system. Next slide. So big picture, the radio device which would be installed inside each residential home here would be read with a mobile truck that drives through the system. There is a possibility, that would be called Phase One. Possibility for Phase Two would be to install collection devices throughout the city, and they hang from light poles, and then the readings come in through those collection devices rather than sending somebody out. Basically, for lack of better words, you push a button, you can read the whole city through the network rather than sending somebody out. All right, next slide. There is also an option for remote shut-off valve, so that would cut down on cost as well for truck rolls, reduce safety issues, and there is an option for a leak sensor which detects distribution side leaks instead of just customer side leaks. And this would be the customer service screen that the reps inside the office, whenever they're taking customer calls, they would have access to this information. It includes daily, hourly information after the bill is sent, location information, the actual meter reading with the, looks like an odometer with the white and black valves. That has all that information at their fingertips. And again, that permits monthly billing. All right. The next slide is the customer web portal, so customers that sign up and log in would have access to their daily and hourly usage. And next slide. This is John's project slide of all the information that's gathered through the deployment process, so we get the out-reading of the old meter, the outside reading and the inside reading, all the information about the new item that's going in, and tracks the workflow of the project in general. Again, thank you for your time. If there's any questions, we would be happy to answer them.
Alderman Newsome.
If I understood you correctly, there is that device there?
Shut off.
That would have to be installed in every home in order to use it?
Yes, there would be a water meter and one of these in every home.
And what is that going to cost to get inside every home and put that in?
There's a fee.
Yeah, we're still working with the numbers on that, but this is a turnkey operation which they'll be in charge of each and every home and install the radio. They'll make the appointment, they'll do everything for us, which they have been doing in other municipalities, so they have the manpower on doing that.
So nobody from the city has to do that?
No, it's a turnkey operation in which they'll do everything for us. They'll work on weekends or late hours if necessary. They're prepared for doing that, they have the experience of doing that other municipalities also.
What is the timeframe of you thinking that you could possibly get that in every home?
We're looking at a two-year project, it could be eighteen months to two years.
Go ahead. Alderman Tempest.
Would you be using it when you go ahead with this program, certain areas you do and get done, and then you move to the next area, or what's your plans?
That's correct. Typically, you would deploy in a certain geographic area, and then once that part's done, you start reading that with the system.
And how do we handle vacant homes?
Cut them easily, fleshed out.
Yeah, we'll do that as necessary. We contact the banks or the realtors, whoever has the housing listing, and whenever they sign up a water line, water service, we'll get them then.
Yeah, okay. Alderman Vivera.
What's the accuracy again on this?
This is going to be 99.99% accurate to the meter. It's the water meter itself that measures the water for the accuracy, so the new meters are going to be higher accuracy than the current meters.
And this should cut down on delinquency, shouldn't it?
Correct.
Shouldn't it do as well?
Correct. That is the whole chaos, we're trying to get to monthly billing versus quarterly.
Right.
And going back to the accuracy, we are installing quite a bit of new meters on this project. We're looking, what, eighty percent of them?
How much more than eighty percent?
Eighty percent of new meters, so we're cleaning out the whole system, housekeeping.
Right, and that's not at the cost of the homeowner, correct?
No.
Okay.
No cost of homeowner at all.
Alderman Beedley.
Does this send out a constant radio signal, or is it activated at a certain time?
Yeah, it sends out a signal every six minutes to the network, and in the mobile it sends out a signal every ten seconds.
Is this similar to those smart meters that they're trying to put on people's homes for common orthetists?
Yes.
Electric meters?
Yes.
Same frequency?
No.
Well, I mean, I read, and some people complain that it gave them health problems with the radio signal constantly coming out of their meter. In some communities, have you ever had to have a police officer go along with any of your people to go in certain residences? That might be a consideration.
He's the person in charge of installation service.
The concept RF is being held for certain funds, and it gets discussed a lot.
Speaking on the mic, please.
There's concerns with it, but if you think about this, this is a battery-powered transmitter. It lasts for over twenty years, bubbling up and giving a very low power, short burst of data transmission. Again, a high scanner, the 933 megahertz is like your cordless telephone in your house. The broadcast strength of this is far less than what you have in a cell phone that you carry around. But again, in order for this to last twenty years, it can't have that much power.
Do people break them?
It's tampering.
Malicious damage to them? What do we do in that case? Is there any penalty?
There is a tamper detection in there, so it would notify you when it was tampered with. It's up to you all to decide whether you just replace it or charge this.
To my original, or the previous question, have you had the occasion where your installer had to have a police officer?
No, we have not. We probably installed about a million meters, that hasn't happened. I heard that it did happen, I think even in Naperville. I read an article on it, but we have not had that issue. It really is, if a customer chooses, what we do, we need to schedule an appointment to get into a person's home in order to do the installation. That means we send out notifications saying, "We need to change your meter, please schedule an appointment at your convenience, we will arrive and do it." If they don't respond, we send another notice. Usually in that notice, it indicates some kind of a ramification. We need to get access, if you don't, you risk, and that comes to your ordinances. You may risk a bill surcharge for manual reading, you may risk a bill or water being turned off. If they don't respond to that, we would send a third, what we call a final notice. We'd also make a phone call. And it's generally after about the third notice, maybe a door tag and a phone call, then we go back to the, we go back to you and say, "We can't get access to this home." So it's not so much with the police escort, I'm kind of bouncing around here, that was when people were changing electric meters on the outside of houses, you didn't have to be home to do that. People didn't want them in their yards, and so the police support came to do that. We can't get into the house unless they let us in. And so they would be calling to volunteer for an appointment.
Thank you.
Alderman Velco.
One question, you brought up a good point there, you cannot get into the house unless somebody lets you in. What type of hours and weekdays, plus Saturday, are you guys working for people that, husband and wife, that have jobs? And they leave at eight o'clock in the morning and don't come home until six?
Ideally, we're working normal business hours, but if you're not able to perform to that, we offer evening hours and weekend hours for appointments.
Thank you. Yeah, I got one more question.
Alderman Vivera.
Corporation Council, would we need to amend our ordinance?
Yes.
Since we're getting this new technology, would we have to do that?
Well, listening to what they're saying, and considering this peripherally, we need to modify our orders to fit the new program.
Right.
Plus, as they indicated, we're going to need to put some kind of notices to the community, what in effect is going to happen, and what the penalties are if they do not wish to comply.
Very well.
That would have to be amended by the council.
Very good.
Thank you.
Your Honor. Alderman Moiseo.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I've said for a long time that water is a utility, it's no different than gas or electric. We just happen to be the provider. And what this does, this makes us a much better or much more efficient system, and a much better way to deliver water, much better customer service on that. I had a meeting with these gentlemen, and one of the things was you can get your own consumer port hole, and let's say some people go to Florida, you're on vacation, you can pull it up and look, and you say, "Well, I'm not home, and my water meter's running. Maybe you got a leak, maybe something's wrong, maybe your neighbor's stealing your water out of your, whatever." So there's a lot, besides those things, there's a lot of advantages. The monthly billing to me is key. All the, every other utility bills you by the month.
Right.
No one else does it except for sanitary district. Everybody else does, it'd be potential for budget. There's a lot more advantages to this, which makes it a better system for all of us involved. We've been far too long, we've been antiquated as a water system. It's our, it's our most valuable resource, it helps make a lot of money, provides a service. This just buttons it up further, makes it far better for all of us involved. The biggest thing too, one of the biggest problems we have is working comp claims. I mean, guys got to go read a meter now, go through trucks, do all that other stuff. Guy can pull up, and they take about Phase Two, they could have a thing up on a telephone pole, they could drive up and read the whole neighborhood very quickly. That's much more efficient than having some guy traipse through the snow and try to figure out all the things like that. And Tina just told us, we're pumping the same amount of gallons, but our water revenue's not where it was last year. There's something wrong. We're pumping the same amount of gallons, so something's wrong. Our system's not tight. This tightens it up, makes it better for everybody. Thank you.
Yeah. Our current system is labor-intensive. Tom, I think there's four people working doing this, correct?
No.
How many?
The entire department is eight.
Eight? So we have eight employees doing this. Once this new...
Right now, we have six, that's two of our accounts.
And when the new system comes in, we'll have one person driving the truck.
One person to drive.
Eight hours a day, and they're done for...
One to two days a month.
A month.
And the rest will be deployed as we see fit, and we're still going to need a couple to do service work, and we'll deploy the housework, I think, a couple of works of the, 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 so maybe, maybe we could shift a couple over to, so that's not too soon.
Okay. Alderman Newsome.
How long does the installation take?
It lasts two years.
No, 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 no. If he goes into a house and does the installation, how long does that take?
We tell customers it'll be thirty minutes typically, but it's usually about fifteen minutes. It's not too long.
Okay, and that'll be installed right next to the water meter that's in their house?
Right, and the water meter.
We would come in, shut off the valve, remove the old meter, put the new meter in. The transmitter's tethered to the meter with a wire, we'll put it as high as practical above the meter and the raptors, again, to get RF signal out of the basement, so it's the meter transmitter.
So you would be putting in a new meter?
Most locations, a new meter.
Okay.
If they have a new meter there already, a lot of the, if it does, we could just put a transmitter on it, it would be less costly. It's the old meters that tend to slow down, under-register, and that's what we're talking about.
So the meter would be how old to be, I mean, how new to be considered new? In the last five, ten years?
Yeah, usually, seven is the number that we a lot of times use, but we also need to have a compatible encoder register on it.
Okay.
I mean, if you, if you're aware, some of the problems that you have in your city is that these old registers are sending a pulse to an outside reader, and that's, you don't want a pulse counter. You want an absolute encoder register so that you don't have that pulse issue, or if it misses a pulse, then it starts to get behind you. And then you start to under-register water, and then we go into these houses and we find that, you know, this meter inside says ten thousand, and outside it says eight thousand, so we've lost two thousand units someplace over the last five years.
Okay.
If I may add something to this, the amnesty program we were recommending is, right now, we do have a reader, a reading inside the meter and one outside. There will be a discrepancy. So how do we justify, how much do we charge when we take out the meter? We are recommending a amnesty, start from scratch, start from zero, let the residents start from home.
Does that apply to current people?
Everyone.
Everyone, yeah.
Every household.
Such as over North Chapel?
North Chapel and commercial buildings too.
That's only fair.
That's fair.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you so much, I appreciate it. I learned a lot about water meters in our last meeting in my office, and it looks like a great program. It's certainly going to bring Wakegan into the 21st century, so thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Next is a presentation by John Davis. Mr. Davis, would you please come forward? We have the honor of having a gentleman who works for us, Brian Anderson. He's a recipient of the Department of Defense Patriotism Award. Brian, would you step forward too, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for allowing me to attend tonight and make a presentation on behalf of the Department of Defense. I represent the Veterans Assistance Commission of Lake County, which is a member of the Illinois Committee for Employee Support of the Guard and Reserve. On their behalf, I am presenting the ESGR Patriot Award. The award is a thank you for your support during a very difficult time in our nation's defense. Today, we have less than one percent of our population serving in the armed forces, with less than three million young men and women defending the U.S. The active forces here become totally reliant on the Guard and Reserve to bolster our nation's defense force. Without them, we cannot defend and carry out our mission. When we sent our troops to Africa for the Ebola outbreak, it was the reserve medical units that went with our active forces. Today, we have reserves serving in seven hotspot regions in the world. Brian Anderson, City of Wakegan Water Works, is totally supportive of Staff Sergeant Brian Weber's service with the 814th Military Police Company. The word reads, "Office of the Secretary of Defense Employee Support of the Guard and Reserve recognizes Brian Anderson, City of Wakegan Water Works, as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve." Mr. Mayor, if you could come down, please. (applause)
of the National Guard. Do you want to say something while you are nominating our employer?
I, I, uh... Brian Toby is not pretty good. No, I'm not a public speaker. I have a, I have a employee that works for me, and, sort of, for, for, interact, and I have the ability to be able to support them with the city's help. And thank you, Alderman, for your support.
Thank you. Brian, you are a gentleman, a scholar. These are the types of people that we have working for our community and for our city. We have many, many more like him, and hopefully those of you appreciate men like, like Brian who serve with dignity and honor in this city. Audience time, Jane Ferry.
I'm Jane Ferry, Executive Director of Wakegan Main Street, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is the final weekend for both Of Mice and Men at the Shornick Theater at Jack Benny Center for the Arts in Bowen Park, and A Complete History of America abridged at Three Brothers Theater in downtown Wakegan. Both shows have received rave reviews, one for its poignancy and the other for its comedy. Please go out and support them. Black Violin, featuring classically trained musicians, mixing musical genres from hip-hop to jazz to classical, will be at the Genesee Theater this Thursday, February 20th. Tickets are going fast, so please call the Genesee and get yours. Stand-up comedian Rodney Carrington will appear on Sunday, the 22nd. And mark your calendars for CLC's 31st Salute to Gospel on Saturday, February 28th. This show is always great, it's always a packed house, and this year it is featuring Grammy Award winner Donnie McClurkin. So he was at one of the other shows and just happened to be there, and this one he's being featured, so please go and enjoy that. Also, this week is Chinese New Year, being celebrated at Fong's Kitchen with a Chinese buffet and some, some fun things that they put around the tables. This usually does sell out, please call ahead for your reservations. It is from 5:00 to 9:00 on Thursday, the 19th. Art Walk is this Saturday, February 21st, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And along with the many local artists that are being featured, Urban Edge is featuring student art from the Art Institute of Chicago, Carthage College, and Milwaukee Institute of Art and Design. Art Walk is the third Saturday of every month, and has successfully showcased how arts can be part of the economic development in a community, especially in our downtown area. Please come out and enjoy it, don't be afraid of the cold. If you have any questions about these events or are looking for other events in downtown Wakegan or at the lakefront, please see waakeganmainstreet.org/events, or call our office at 847-623-6650. Remember to shop local and support independent businesses, independent artists, and remember that any money spent locally at these local businesses stays in our community. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jane. John Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is John Gonzalez, I reside at 1332 Walnuts Street. On behalf, I'm here for...
On behalf, I'm here for, thinking, I want to say thank you for something happening this Super Bowl Sunday. On Super Bowl Sunday, me and my wife went out to a snowstorm to watch a game as we planned with friends. On the way to the party, of course, me, the good Samaritan, I stopped and helped about 10 people get out of snowbanks and do the things I do. I'm a business owner, so I do that thing. So anyway, we're right back home about 10:00 P.M., enjoying my mom, my daughter, my, our animals. And then, uh, we were saying goodnight to each other, and all of a sudden, a carbon dioxide goes off. My wife tells me, "Don't worry, your body's probably just a bad read, we'll get it tomorrow." Well, no, tomorrow's not going to come here, we check it tomorrow. Anyway, what I'm trying to say is that we called the fire department. Within five minutes, those guys were there. Now, remember, we're in a snowstorm. Truck four, our truck four pulls up, shit, A, the firehouse on Jackson and Gulf, Waukegan. We were at our home, in the middle of the snowstorm. When they arrived, they were most courteous and very concerned. My wife, on the other hand, was a nervous wreck. Lieutenant David Path, firefighters Dan Burgdahl, Brian Lando, and Scott Vanderburg assured me they would not leave until the problem we had was the reading. And the reading on the carbon dioxide in our house was 50 parts per million. You're only supposed to have like five, everybody hasn't. We had 50 in the house. So we go to sleep, we don't wake up. Anyway, they jumped in the snowbank, shuffled all this stuff off. My vent on the other side was clogged from my neighbor blowing his snow with a snow blower against it. So we went to sleep, and it was a natural fire disaster. Not that he knew that, I knew that, I've been there 16 years, we never had this problem. So anyway, what I'm trying to say is, we can't say enough about these men that saved our lives. These people who are unrecognized, and I think it's unfair. God bless you all, sir, greater than their chosen, and all of you do a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Item A, Minutes, Motion to Approve the Regular Meeting Minutes of February 2, 2015. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Rivera, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, Resolution, Proclamation, Presentation, Appointments. David, would you step to the mic, please? Last week, we held this over, and I spoke to the Alderman who had issue. Everything's been resolved. I would like to appoint David de Balthazar to the Waukegan Library Board. David, would you please give a little background of yourself for us, please?
Sure, Dave Balthazar, I live at 4424 Westell Avenue, Waukegan. I moved here approximately 10 years ago. Retired police officer from Grebeck, Wisconsin. Sorry about that. I've been, I was a business owner when I moved here. Subsequently, I closed that business, I'm now fully retired, so I had some available time, so I've been deciding to start getting involved with some of the municipality stuff.
Sure.
And donate some time out, so I've been actively working with GLASTUP, Great Lakes, and African Sports Association. And then this opportunity to Waukegan Library Board came available, so I thought it would be something that I'd like to work with. Doing some research and looking at what the Director Lee has accomplished here in Waukegan with the library. I look forward to being able to be involved with the progress of the, of the library to continue that. So that's why I was, you know, getting involved with that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, David. A motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman Moizio.
I have a question, if I could.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Beedling?
I think I got an email not too long ago that the library is gonna do some interior renovations. What concerns me is the exterior of the building. It's in dire need of tuck pointing, the garden walls need to be tuck pointed. It's a brick structure, and I think the exterior of the building needs to be buttoned up before we spend too much money on the inside, or the building becomes irreparable. That's all I want to say.
Okay.
If you're on the board, I hope you look into that.
Okay, motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman...
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Rivera.
Also, let me add that Mr. Balthazar is one of my constituents too, and I've met him several times. This is going to be a good choice for the library board, because I know he's, he's passionate about getting involved in the city of Waukegan.
Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Real quick, I just...
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Moizio?
As I remind all library board members, other like, other appointments, library board members spend taxpayers' money. They watch taxpayers' dollars. They're one of the only boards that, some other boards don't do that, that the mayor appoints, but the library board spends and watches taxpayers' dollars. That's very, very important to understand. We, we levy the taxes, we give it to them, they decide what to do with it. So they're very important in the fact that they watch the dollars and they spend taxpayers' money, that's very important. Go ahead, Your Honor.
Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Pass.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Bear fan or packer fan? Aye. Thank you, David, I appreciate your service.
Yeah.
Insurance Committee, Alderman Beedling.
New business, item A, motion by Alderman Rivera?
Make a motion. Doesn't need to be, you just read it, make the motion.
I make the motion.
Item A is authorizing the proper city officials to settle fire department workers' compensation claim number WC 2014969147 for an amount not to exceed $38,789.23, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman Conken. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest? Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Finance Committee, Alderman Velco?
Thank you, Your Honor, the Finance Committee met this evening. Finance Committee, on number A, the Finance Committee recommends that, to adopt a resolution formally earmarking the distribution, the dispersment of funds from the U.S. EPA for specific environmental purposes. For those that are not on the committee and for the audience itself, the U.S. EPA rebated to the city about $845,000, and the city is going to put that into account for the next two years, and we will pay the Yeoman Creek Superfund out of those, out of that amount. And I so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item B, the Finance Committee recommends approving the issuance of a $50,000 promissory note and a $57,500 promissory note payable to Woodland Foods Limited relative to and governed by the March 20th, 2012 redevelopment agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and Woodland Foods Limited, and I so move.
A motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item C, the Finance Committee recommends authorizing the proper city officials to award a contract to CDW for the purpose of a network switch refresh for an amount not to exceed $139,770, funded from line item 100-103-726495, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item D, the Finance Committee recommends authorizing the proper city officials to award a contract to Nationwide Power Solutions for the purpose of an uninterrupted power supply UPS battery backup system for an amount not to exceed $27,477, which is funded from line item 100-103-726495. Some of you, I heard some discrepanement over there. Some of you may not have the correction, it's not 24,477, it's 27,477. What this is, Your Honor, is that the battery backup system for the city of Waukegan, if we lose power, batteries will last for less than a minute before power is restored, excuse me, will last for less than a minute, so we have emergency power. And this will give us a new battery backup system, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May? Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item E, author, the Finance Committee recommends authorizing the proper city officials to renew the Connect CTY license for 2015 with Blackboard Inc. in an amount not to exceed $39,158, funded from line item 555-915924438. And what this is, for the council members in the audience, this is our reverse 911, sometimes called robo-calls, which could possibly be used in relation to what we saw here tonight for the, uh, telling these citizens that we're going to have to get into their houses for the water meters. The Finance Committee recommends an ISO move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Next item, Public Works, Alderman Moizio?
Thank you, Your Honor, item A, motion recommend the City Council authorize the proper city officials draft specifications and advertise for bids for various commodities for the Public Works Department, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it.
Thank you. Motion recommend the City Council authorize the proper city officials to award the sanitary and storm sewer televising project to low-qualified bidder, National Power Rotting of Chicago, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $249,500. Funds are available for this project in fund 312131227619, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item C, motion recommend the City Council authorize the proper city officials to award a streetlight project to low-qualified bidder, Council Burnett of Gurnee, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $332,309. Funds are available for this project in fund 312131227619, I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item D, motion recommend the City Council authorize the proper city officials to waive the bid procedure and authorize the payment to Mississippi Valley Pump for an amount not to exceed $24,629. Funds are available for this project in fund 555916027619. We're waiving the bid because these people are the only ones that can do the work, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
That's it, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moizio. There is no old business, no reports or communications. Item 10, New Business, Recommendation to Action by Corporation Council. Item A, approval of payroll dated February 6, 2015 in the amount of $1,363,651.29. Final payouts, VSP, in the amount of $123,882.79. An employee portion of insurance, VSP, in the amount of $24,602.46. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated February 16, 2015 in the amount of $558,806.52. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Item C, approval of raffle sale application for the American Cancer Society. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Beedling, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, approval of raffle sale application for Portland Society. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Conken, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 11, ordinance's resolution, resolution authorizing the sale of property by the City of Waukegan pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, specifically 2112 Edgewood Road, Waukegan, Illinois, 60087, in the amount of $99,000. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman May, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman's time, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Yeah, just to repeat my comments from before, I don't think we can say enough about updating our water system, just makes things so much better for everybody involved. It makes it a much better system, much more customer service, much less labor-intensive. People that are involved in all that work can be distributed to other things throughout the city. So it really, hopefully, will free up not people from public works, but it might even free up people in the collector's office, because we might not have as many people having to process and go through that, and that's for Mr. Torres to try to figure out, but I would assume it might even help. Anytime you go to some automation, it just, it's just the way to go. It's just, it improves everything. I've been, I've been harping on it for years to try to get it done. It's finally come to fruition, and I'm glad it's here. And, and then amnesty program, that will help out too. That's only fair, I mean, we've, we've had some, we have some meters that are slow and probably not reading right, but that's not necessarily the homeowner's fault, because we haven't had the manpower to get there to change it. But it's not the taxpayers' fault. Again, it was a systems problem. Old meters, not enough manpower. This helps get us back on track. I, I just can't say enough about it, and I, the sooner we get it going, the better we'll be. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling?
enough manpower, this helps get us back on track, I, I just can't say enough about it, um, and I, the sooner we get it going, the better we'll be. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling?
I pass.
Alderman Newsom?
Uh, thank you. I have one issue to talk about a little bit tonight, uh, snow removal from residential sidewalks and businesses and around the schools. Last year, there was an ordinance drafted in February 2014 for us to take a look at. I would like to have this put into public safety committee.
That'd be fine.
Uh, Alderman Conken?
Evanston?
No, this is our ordinance that Ann did last year, but it never got into a committee. And if there is a concern about, uh, issue with imposing a fine, we can talk about that, but if we don't have anything on the books, then we can't enforce anything when we have businesses that don't shovel their sidewalks or residents that deliberately don't shovel their sidewalks in their able body and around the schools where we have the children walking in the streets. Uh, I saw a postman walking in the street, uh, by statute, they're not supposed to even deliver your mail if they don't have a straight path to your house. And I saw a postmaster, or well, postman on Lewis Avenue last week walking in the street because people haven't shoveled their sidewalks. So I'd like to just get that into committee so we can discuss it. Uh, we talk about it every year, it's February again, so I think that's something that we need to look at. That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Tempest?
I appreciate your comments, Alderman, and I would agree wholeheartedly with you. We need to make homeowners and renters responsible for their yards, for their upkeep of their property, and also during snowstorms, I think it's very important. The other thing I want to commend the Waukegan Fire Department, uh, not often am I, or do I need them, but the other day I did need them, my wife, I could not get her up, she fell on the floor, and what a professional team we had, and you see them in use, and when you need them, you really have a good appreciation for the professionalism that our fire department has, and I want to thank the chief and the fire department for their concerns. Thank you.
Alderman May?
I just have one thing, uh, tonight we approved the Connect CTY system where you get alerts from the city of Waukegan, so if anyone's watching this council meeting and you're not signed up, you go to our website to sign up, or there's a phone number you can call, and I don't have it handy, but I highly recommend, we have, um, we pay for unlimited usage, so everyone, I really would recommend gets, uh, signed up, you can either do it email, text message, or, uh, voice call and be alerted of any emergencies or other important information in Waukegan. And the other thing is, is your vehicle sticker applications came out, I would also encourage you to renew your stickers online and use our online system to do so. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Alderman Velco?
Pass.
Alderman Rivera?
Uh, sorry I missed the last meeting, I was stuck in Florida during the, uh, snowstorm that we had.[1295.41][1295.41](laughing) But anyways, uh, I really wanted to, uh, commend, uh, the aldermen and, uh, because I know we've been, uh, uh, beefing about our roads for the past, since I became an alderman in 2002, 2003, and with all of us championing that, and particularly in the last couple of years, Alderman Moizio, uh, I'm very happy that, to see that we're gonna get some of these roads done, especially in, uh, the ninth ward, I'm very happy, and particularly on, on our far western, uh, part of the north ward, River Road, I'm very pleased, uh, of the amount of work that's gonna be done there, so, uh, thank you very much, thanks, Tom. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about that. And I also want to commend, uh, Alderman Moizio, because I know you've been championing this, uh, these new meters, these meters, uh, we've been asking for that for the past few years, and now that we have it, I think it's gonna be an excellent, uh, service to the city, no question about it, so, uh, thank you, Alderman, for, for always championing that, uh, you've done a great job in that. Uh, I also, uh, just to let everyone know, uh, being part of the Lions Club for the last, you know, twelve years, uh, we're having our annual, and I'll mention it again, it's in March, our annual steak and egg breakfast, it's our 11th annual Abbott and Gust, Martin Gus, uh, steak and egg breakfast, uh, we raise money to, for a lot of causes in the city, uh, education, uh, for special, uh, education especially, uh, for the blind, for diabetes, uh, for eyeglasses, you know, the Little Fort Lions Club, uh, we're definitely very active when it comes to, uh, fundraising for these causes, and we appreciate, you know, the community, uh, especially supporting, uh, uh, this effort. Uh, it's, uh, gonna be held at the Yacht Club Sunday, March 15th. Uh, I know we have a couple more meetings left, and I'll probably mention it again, but, uh, in all, all the aldermen's boxes, I left, uh, uh, this information, uh, take it home, uh, read it, hopefully, uh, you'll be there, uh, as well as the many people in the, uh, in the crowd as well, so, I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate the effort that, that you guys do, and especially all our, our public works and, and, and to add to the, uh, the cleanup, the snow removal, I know I get a lot of calls, uh, especially in the Hidden Glen, uh, section when it comes to, uh, uh, the mailboxes. You know, if you have mailboxes close to the road, it's up to the homeowner to clear that area, even if, you don't have to completely clear it, but just have an opening, uh, to get to the mailbox so the mailman can get to the mailbox. That's the homeowner's responsibility. It's not the city of Waukegan's to push it or, uh, because half the time, once you start pushing that amount of snow, guess what's gonna happen to your mailbox? It's gonna get damaged. So, uh, appreciate it if, uh, hopefully we don't get as much snow as we've gotten the last past, you know, few weeks, but, uh, keep that in mind, we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Alderman Conken?
Thank you. Uh, I have one item that I'd like to mention, I got several calls on it this week, and it stems from the article we saw in the New Sun last week about the lady on the south side of town on McAllister Avenue that had her pet attacked by a pit bull, jumped her fence, came onto her property, she shot the pit bull, pit bull died, with the Waukegan police, and this is the complaint I got, did they have the right to seize this woman's firearm, her pistol? Um, because the article then goes on to report that her house was shot up. And his concern, and the concern of the constituent, and obviously, and he's thinking about what might possibly happen to himself, is does the city have the right to confiscate that pistol? I mean, the lady had an FOID card, so she was, they had legal ability to own that pistol, she defended her house, um, he says he didn't feel she did anything wrong, and that this was an illegal seizure of personal property. Now, I don't know if that's our policy with the police department, I'm gonna check with the chief and find out exactly why it was taken, but the fact that she was left defenseless, I think is what really startled, uh, this individual, I got a few phone calls on it, like I said. So, uh, it is part of our policy, I want us to make sure that it's not something that the city's gonna be, uh, responsible for or be put in a bad situation. Uh, if it is policy and it's a good policy, chief, I want to talk to you about it so I can get some answers back out to the community, but I want to, wanted to address this front, in front of everybody here, and so everybody in the city knows, uh, I think that they have, the big thing was, this lady was held defenseless, and should something have happened a little more serious, she had no means to defend herself since we had confiscated her weapon. So, that was my concern, that was his concern, and I'd like, and I'll be talking to the chief to get some answers, so if anybody else had any concerns, you can call me at home and I'll find out the answers for you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to speak on behalf of something, I've been reading in, uh, Facebook that city of Waukegan's doing nothing. Here's all we've done in 22 months, the department heads and the aldermen, these are major things we've accomplished. Bridge development, $151 million investment, that took us 22 months to do, we did it. Harlem Irving, Fountain Square, $22 million investment, that took us 22 months to do. Sixty-five new homes on River Road will be started this spring. Thirty-one million dollar infrastructure will start this spring. We didn't raise the tax rate, the levy, and we bonded the road infrastructure. The issue now becomes the lakefront. Within the next two years, the, we will have condos on the lakefront. I will work the next 22 months to make sure that we get our first set of condos on the lakefront. We're currently working on that right now. Also understand this, we're trying to acquire as much property down there as we possibly can. Larson, uh, Larson Marine and our attorney, Steve Martin, have finally discussed a contract that we can sign that will allow us to take possession of the north property, the old Johnson Moore's OMC site, I anticipate we can have that done in a month, Steve?
Close to, dear.
That will give us total possession of that property. The last administrations could not have that happen, we have done that. The lakefront will be developed before my next term of office is over. We will start development as soon as possible. I gave that instructions to Russ Tomlin, Noel Kisher, Tina Smigelski, John Antaramian, and our attorney, Steve Martin. We are working now, the problem now is getting, acquiring all that property. So, be patient, we will get it done, just have faith and confidence in this administration, in these department heads, and in these aldermen, because as you can see, what's been accomplished in 22 months, it's very, very good to hear that we, as a, as a city and a municipality, can work together for one common goal, and that's to make Waukegan a better place to live, work, and play, and I can assure you, within the two, next two years, you will see condos on the lake. That being said, motion adjourned by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?